Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectments Meeting for January 19th, 2016. First item on the agenda, a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I move that we accept the agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
We approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded.
All in favor? And Ms. Michelle, you're first on the board.
Because she knows people.
Hmm?
Because she knows people.
Because she knows people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So first up, I wanted to discuss the lawn care bid. I'm just thinking about the bids that we need to go out for in preparation for the budget. So we have some numbers. This is almost, this is a copy of last year's bid for the lawn care. I just put some make-believe dates in there as an idea. Weren't sure how you wanted to go about the bid this year, whether we're ready to put in for the veterans' maintenance as well, or if we're going to do that separate this year, as we haven't had a lot of good feedback on the veterans' graves.
Didn't we used to do a bunch of the cemeteries as part of this bid, and then somebody told us we couldn't do it, so we had to take it off, but now we know we have to do it if they have veterans in them? Wasn't part of the lawn bid before they did?
Not for the past six years at any point.
Make that ten, not that I recall either.
You don't recall?
No. And we have, I mean-
Because I thought at one time they were doing some cemeteries, and they got stopped because of the private funds.
And it's possible. We have been working diligently on trying to get the information in regards to the veterans. We have, there's been a variety of people that have brought us information on cemeteries, and some that are listed, but, and I don't remember who the conservation liaison is, but we're just, we just don't have good data for me to be able to say, you know, here's six cemeteries, or here's 15, you know, short of maybe taking a poll through the next three months of every person that walks in the office. We don't, I mean, I can't tell you, Ted, how many, you know what I mean, how many we have. We just don't have good data on it.
We put money into an account for this last year, right?
Yes.
One, okay. How about if we try that for three months, you know, us doing the poll, and then we'll go out separately for the veterans?
Okay.
And we'll put in whatever it was, was it $5,000 last year?
Twenty, well, it's 2,500.
And that's all we've got in there is 2,500?
Yeah, pretty much.
So we're asking if anybody knows the location of a veteran buried anywhere in the Town of Acton, and we'll just try to make a-
Yep.
A database?
Yeah. And then, once we know that, then we just have to figure out how many cemeteries say are?
We could probably give you a half a dozen, but I'm afraid once we start maintaining them, you know, we won't, people are going to come forward, right? So we'd rather have it all ahead of time, but I'm not sure how else to collect it from people. We have-
Yeah, and I think, I think it should definitely be different than this, because we're not going to ask them to mow as often, and-
Fertilizing and that kind of thing?
Fertilizing and all that, so have some, you know, and if the same people that bid on the, on the mowing for the town buildings want to bid on it, they can, but, so do another one after, we see if we can find some more cemeteries, so we know how many we've got.
Okay.
You guys agree on the 2,500 again?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So we'll review this and check the dates, and give her the okay to send it out by the end of the week, if, as long as there's nothing going on with it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And next on my list is retirement.
Yeah.
We had discussed briefly retirement packages, and you had some stuff sent over from the main retirement system, and I did some numbers, and I'm going to hand this packet off to you with, these are numbers estimated on this year's salaries for the people that would be eligible, what we'd be looking at as far as a price based on this year's salaries. And they also have, they have some notes in there about prior year's service, if the, if the town wanted to, to go forward with this and-
Payback?
Include prior year's service. The prior year's service is due solely from the employer and not the employee.
So it'll just be our share, which is how much, how much percent?
Well, you're looking at about, depending on how many years you want to go back, and you can choose that.
Oh, okay.
But just based on this year, about 22,000.
For all, three employees or four?
Well, if we look at everybody who-
Oh, be it the fire chief.
three vacant positions with the fire, two with the fire department, and one here at Town Hall, the transfer station employees and the Town Hall employees, they, everybody averages over the-
So they're all eligible?
Yeah.
Okay. And how many years is that going back?
That's just for this year. The 22,000 is just for this year.
22,000 will be this year's budget.
Oh.
And if we wanted to cover prior years, then we would have to submit to them how many years back we want to go, along with copies of salaries and whatnot for prior years, and they would come out with a number for us.
And would they be charging us interest on that number, too?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
There was no mention of interest.
If you go, if you start going back, though, you're allowed, you're going to have-
It's going to cost a fortune.
I mean, something is better than nothing.
And you're going to have a complaint from people that missed by a year or something.
And this, this plan that I, that I've gotten the numbers for is the cheapest plan.
Okay.
So I went with, that's your low number.
Okay. Would it make more sense for the town to set up its own plan and let the employees choose? Like I said, I went up from my company, and the employees got to choose what they wanted invested in within Vanguard funds, and I would put in a percentage, and they would put in a percentage, and I would take it out of their check before I paid them, and then I would put from the company. Would it make more sense to do that, or is it better for you folks to be in the municipal? I know it's a higher rate than most companies pay, so that's probably why it's a better deal.
I mean, either way, you're adding some more, you're adding some more administrative work into it, if, if we're taking care of it here, as far as tracking and all of that and investing and so forth.
Right. No, you wouldn't do that. All you do is put the money in once a month. Okay. When do you need to know this by?
Well, preferably the end of February, so it can be included in the budget.
Is this something that Chapley, does Chapley offer this at all?
No.
I didn't know if we had another company to compare it to.
Well, this is, this is the state.
Oh, okay.
This is the same thing as the teachers have.
State of Maine.
Yeah. So the employee contribution, is that flexible, or that's what you have to put in?
That's what you have to put in.
And the employer, that's what they have to put in?
It's taken out before you get your check.
Yeah.
Once you're in it. And everybody, would everybody have to be in it? Or they have a choice not to be in it?
No. They have to choose not to be in it.
But once they choose no, this time, they can't go in later, right?
They can during open enrollment, which is once a year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's like insurance.
Just like medical insurance.
Right.
Obamacare.
Okay. That looks great.
Mr. Williams, Ted has his hand raised.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have to ask a question. How solvent is the main system? I know right around us here, New Jersey, Massachusetts, having problems with their state pension plans, other states are even worse conditions, like Illinois, Louisiana, and others. Is it a solvent system right now?
That I really can't say for sure. I haven't, I haven't pursued it a lot, just because it's just something that we've mentioned. But it's certainly something I can look into, you know, the further we go along, and the board decides how they want to proceed.
Yeah, it's doing very well now. There was some concern about, probably seven, eight years ago, when the guy that was running it decided to invest in something offshore, and it didn't do very well. So they lost a bunch of money, but they've gotten it back since. But that was when the stock market went down for everybody. So they've gotten it back since. The school is completely vested in it, all the staff, the teachers, and principal, and superintendent, and all the employees at the school are already getting this. We just have not been offering retirement, and we constantly are losing really good people, because other towns are. So we're just trying to look at benefits to see if we can't make this a better place to somebody have their career, so. But, yeah, definitely, I don't think there's any issues with it at all. And I know the school, I know one district that had paid ahead for some reason, and they just decided that they didn't want to keep that much money, so they gave it back to the town to pay it on time instead of waiting, so. It sounds like, yeah, it sounds like it's doing pretty well. Yeah. Okay. That's good.
And I wanted to discuss, before I start prepping the budget and the warrant and so forth in the next month, how are we putting forward requests on the warrant, say, for social services that are requesting a request, an increase? Last year, we had, we capped at maximum of 3% if they requested an increase. Are we doing the same this year, or are we putting forward what they asked for? Are we putting forward last year's numbers?
What kind of increases are you seeing from them as they come in?
They all vary, but the ones that do have an increase are more than 3%, which isn't a lot of dollars. If you look at some of them, you know, if you're looking at a $500 request, 3% is a little.
Yeah, but there's, and there's always some that are going to come in with double, like last year. Double in theirs, and especially once the county stopped paying any of them.
What is the debt, I'm sorry, what is the deadline for them to submit? Is it the end of February for them as well, or January?
End of January.
So do you want to put it on the-
Next week.
You want to take a look at it in February and make a decision? I think as long as you decide by the end of February, Michelle, will be good.
Yeah.
So you can kind of look at them, have them in front of you?
Yeah. Do we get an answer from Warren and Finance on whether they want to meet with all of them or not?
Um, no.
Okay.
And I guess the same would, would be for the departments, if they're requesting an increase outside of wages for services or equipment or whatever. Should that all just be presented to the board as is, and on the warrant as is, or?
Well, it should be presented to us as is on that meeting, when we meet with everybody, but it won't, it shouldn't be on the warrant yet, until we hear what their reasons are.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I know there's several coming in with some new ideas, so I want to hear them before I say, yeah, put it on the warrant.
Okay. And lastly, I have the audit bid, which is, we're due this year to go out to bid. I have, turnaround time has been an issue, and, I mean, the service is great that we're receiving, but we're not receiving our final copy, you know, with a quick turnaround time. So I did change one section of wording to include no later than 90 days following the end of the fiscal year, for us to have audit in hand.
Didn't we give them a date when we renewed the contract with them? Told them they had to have it in by-
The audit, the fieldwork had to be done by a certain amount of time.
Oh, we didn't put it in.
But the written, yeah, the written thing, so this is, a report shall be presented no later than 90 days, which is-
File a report?
Yeah. Which is, it's a good turnaround, as far as, we want to wait 30 days for deferred revenue before they can close out anything anyhow, and then that gives us a month for fieldwork and any questions, and usually it's the school that holds us up the most, with the state, you know, confirming everything with the state, but-
But, I mean, this happens to be right, I mean, we, we've been waiting for the audit report. I mean, our fiscal year ends in June, we're, we haven't even sent our town report out, you know, and we're into January, Chapley's on a calendar year through December, and they're, they're already ready to go out with their audit. So, I mean, it's really something that we need to consider moving that up. And I know there's a big difference, Michelle and I have talked about the difference in fees between the two towns.
Yeah.
And Chapley certainly pays for that expedited fee, but-
Well, the other thing, too, is, isn't it recommended that you go every so many years with a new auditor, just be, I mean, we've had them for what, six years or nine years?
Nine.
Nine years, so it's a good idea to go out and look for somebody else and-
Yeah, and this is the-
Have you set our eyes, look at our books?
This is the end of our three-year contract, and I'm certainly happy with them. I, I like working with Bruce. He's, he's been very helpful on things that aren't specifically audit-related, but throughout the year, if we have questions, we throw them to them, and they don't charge us any extra. I'm pleased with that part. It's, it's the turnaround that, that is a little discouraging for us. And this, this is pretty much identical to the last bid that we put out, other than that, that change in wordage there. And again, it's a, a three-year contract.
Okay.
Yeah, the Town of Chapley, they do have a quick turnaround because of their March Town meeting, and their fiscal year ends December 31st. They pay about $6,000, no, $7,000 more than we do for that-
$7,000?
And they don't, and that's not including the school. We have both the town and the school. And the Town of Chapley pays dearly for that.
Woo!
Service.
That's, that's probably why we stayed with Smith last time, right? Everybody else came in so much higher?
Yeah.
So we'll review this and add it to next week for our final, where it's three or four pages, give them a chance to read it, and we'll give the okay-
Yep.
For the next week. You have deadlines on there? Or are you ready to go out to bid, once they give you the okay?
I'm ready to go out to bid once through.
We'll review it and put it on next week's.
Super. That's it. Any questions for me?
Uh, no, good.
Okay.
You're awesome.
Have a good night.
Thanks a lot for coming in, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
Old business, time clock update.
So, I met with the gentleman from Westbrook. I did actually, have learned quite a lot on this whole time clock thing. There are numerous, numerous municipalities that use time clocks, Sanford being our closest, and they actually use this company. There aren't a lot of companies in Maine that do this. However, I'm finding that most of the places that do it, I mean, they have large, you know, I mean, this is for everything from parks and wrecks to the, to the water, I mean, it maintains a lot of people, and it might be cost-effective. It's not an expensive program to install. Basically, the, the information that he gave me is, we can, there's a lot of different things that you can do, and I don't want to take up a whole lot of time, but essentially, if we put, let's say, three readers, and they don't need internet, if we put three readers in three different locations, that setup, getting everything that we need as far as the software, and the software does things that's over all of our heads, I mean, Michelle can tell you from looking at it with the, I mean, it does everything from the tax forms, I mean, it's, it's very, very detailed, and it would save her a lot of time.
Oh, great.
I believe. They also have a way that you can, you can punch in by using your phone. Not, it doesn't have to be a smartphone, it could just be calling into a number. You'd have a dedicated phone line, and they'd have their ID number, and so the, so the road commissioners, for example, that are not, you know, can't get to one of the places to punch in, because they're leaving from the house because of the storm, can actually call in and punch in. And that all gets downloaded into the system. Setup fee altogether for them to create the program, because it's not pre-built, they do it based on what you need, you're looking at about $3,500. So it's really not bad. The, the cost comes from the monthly cost, and that's, you know, once we do a little math. It's based on the number of active employees you have. So your fee every month is $3 per active member for just the standard time clock machines. So you're looking at, let's just say, we had 100 people punch in, and that, Michelle actually gave me a number of about 85 to 90, let's figure $300. The phone, for every method that you have that you can punch in, costs you a little bit more money. So, for example, we would make that additional phone line, let me pass this down to you. The additional phone line would only be available to certain employees, you know, there's no reason that-
Those are snowplow employees.
Right, there's no reason, so that would keep the cost down.
Or the firefighters.
Right.
Yeah. Or even the dump.
The transfer station either, you know, would be-
Right, they wouldn't need to. There's no reason they would ever need to use the phone to punch in. So that, that could get the cost down, because as you can see, they charge an additional, see where it says telephone-based time clock, they charge an additional $1.25 monthly fee for every user that uses it. So every month, your fee is going to be different, depending on how many people physically punch in and how many don't punch in. So based on this estimate, I mean, you're looking at $426.50 a month, you know, and then if we multiply that times 12 months, I mean, we're looking at, you know, another yearly cost of, you know, $6,000, $7,000. You know, I, I don't know, I don't know if it's something, if they would go as small as only making it, you know, the, because essentially, the lower we can get that active employee number, the better we are.
Yeah.
But we also don't want to, we're either going to do it all through, it talks to Trio, and they download information and share it between the two, so we don't want the treasurer doing half manual and half, you know, because that's going to create more work. Something to think about, the gentleman wants to come in and give you a lengthy demonstration, but that's kind of where we're at with it. There's only one other company, like I said, that, that I was able to find that, that offers something like this, that with the remote access, which is what we really need.
How does it connect without internet? Telephone line?
Yes.
So we'd have to put a telephone line if we wanted one at the salt shed?
Oh, right, right. There's no phone down there at all?
No.
No, and there's only one at the transfer station, there's one here, so yeah, goes through the phone line.
But we got to get that one fixed, too, right? You said that that one's not working.
As long as it's not raining, we're good. Don't call the transfer station when it's raining. I'm working on it. It's funny, because every time I go to call B C N, it's never raining on the day. Anyway, so, more information I can gather for you, do you want to see their presentation? Do you want to just kind of, I mean, it's a, I want to keep going the way we were and say, you know-
Yeah.
It is what it is, you go when you go, and keep sorting through it.
What do you guys think?
We can put it off till next week, we don't need to make a decision.
Okay.
So we give some time to think about it, and put pros and cons together, because-
Yeah. I mean, I like the idea, but it's an expense.
Right, because, you know, it's really, is it a necessary expense-
Right.
For the reason that we originally started looking into it?
Yeah.
You know, there's got to be another, another way, so.
Uh, update on the fire chief?
We have the chairman here, Mr. Williams, is going to come speak on behalf of that.
Oh.
Mr. Selectman, good evening.
Good evening.
As far as the fire chief is concerned, I was elected chairperson for the Fire Rescue Commission, I guess it's called officially, and we met last Thursday, the 14th of January, for the first meeting. We accepted, of course, all of the prerequisites, which I think the selectmen had chosen originally to advertise for the position. We elected a seventh member that is required by the ordinance. We only had one person who had volunteered for the position. That person lives in Massachusetts, but has property and a home here in Acton. There was no requirement that they had to be a citizen of Acton, and because he was willing to make the hour and a half drive up here for meetings, we accepted him-
That's great.
-for that position. It's a Mr. Dolan, D-O-L-A-N. He works out of Marlborough, I believe.
Strong, strong background in fire rescue.
Very strong background. He's a firefighter.
That's great.
As far as the chief itself, we've received 13 applications. These applications have come primarily from Maine, New Hampshire, and Massachusetts. We have one applicant who is working in Dublin, Ireland, and we have one applicant who works in Sahiya in the Sultanate of Oman, adjacent to Saudi Arabia and the United Arab Emirates. We decided that we accepted all of these, certainly, but that it probably would require some additional items. And because there are 13 people, many of whom have very good curriculum vitae or resumes, we were hoping to have the vetting system a little bit more efficient. And in doing that, the commission asked that we go ahead and send a letter out to all 13, reassuring them that we've received all of the necessary documents that had been required by the original advertisement, but that we probably needed from the selectmen a little bit more information that we might be able to add that may change someone's mind before going through this very complicated system of, of interviewing. One was to be able to get a more exact salary that the selectmen were going to be able to offer to the fire chief, and a list of the benefits that would also be included in that salary. The commission spent a lot of time talking about other items. A agility test, a physical agility test, is now a requirement of the feds, the federal agencies for, to be totally up in keeping with federal guidelines. Almost all the areas around here have an agility test, although not necessarily as robust as the federal one. We're fortunate to have a fire chief, Smith, from Sanford, as a member of the commission, and he shared some of the items that the agility test has on it from the Sanford Fire Department. Theirs is a very expensive program, requires a lot of expenditure for equipment for testing, and we were able to come out with an idea that with our present equipment, without buying anything further for testing, that we would be able to do a very good comprehensive agility test here locally in Acton, at the Public Safety Building. They also would have to sign a waiver that their healthcare provider had stated that they're healthy enough to do the test, since myocardial infusions and heart attacks, I think, is the number one cause of mortality amongst firemen, firefighters. So therefore, we're going to send a letter to all 13, hopefully with some more specific information from you all, as far as salary and benefits, number one. We will also let them know that, as they will, I'm sure, expect that a physical assessment and agility test will be run by us for each of the candidates that get to that, that point in selection, and that there will be, because of the varied places where they live, considered, because it's a working type of position and not just administrative, that we would expect a 30-minute response time, as far as any emergencies are concerned, based on ideal weather and traffic conditions. The minutes have been taken, I took them, we've written them up, blessed by our clerk, and it will be available for you probably this next week, after our next meeting, which is scheduled for this coming Thursday.
Oh, good.
Okay? We plan to have this all finished by mid-February.
Oh, good.
We're putting them in slots of three, highest group, the middle group, and the lower group, and we'll come to some agreement as who represents the top group, and concentrate on those people as a starter. The letter, hopefully, contain all this added information, will go out this week to them. We expect perhaps that some of them may want to withdraw if they realize that this is a working fire chief and not just an administrative one. And so, that's where we stand right now.
How do you plan on handling the ones overseas?
Well, one of them, I think, can, is in the process of coming home, the one from Ireland.
Okay.
The one from Oman, as far as I'm concerned, may very well be looking for a job because of the oil prices. Most of the Sultanates-
May not have a job soon.
Most of the Sultanates on the Arabian Peninsula are looking to cut budgets, and he may be coming home, but if not, we can make arrangements with Skype.
Okay.
He has a Skype service available, and we would do it via Skype. They're about a nine-hour difference in time for us.
And all 13 met the minimum requirements?
All 13 met the minimum requirements. There are some that are a little bit hazy, that we'll have to go specifically and ask about. We have only two, I think, that have an actual university degree, but every one of them has an associate degree, or has enough experience and special certifications that would make up for that.
And are they EMTs, or, you know, are there any paramedics?
All of them are EMTs, except I believe one is an advanced EMT. I have no person of that 13 who is actually a paramedic.
Okay. Well, the salary, I think we were talking about the $50,000, the $35,000 that was put forward for the salary, plus the $15,000 stipend that we were giving the chief, is that correct, Peter? Is that what we decided? So the salary would be $50,000. As far as benefits, we already have health insurance in place for self and family, and[1712.73] and it's eighty-five percent. We pay eighty-five percent, they have to pay the rest.
Pay a hundred percent of the individual, eighty-five percent of the family.
Right.
Okay.
And we're working, as you heard earlier, we're working on a pension plan, so if that, if the town votes that in this year, then he would definitely, he or she would definitely be eligible for the...
Subject to that as well.
For the state, main state retirement.
If they decide to do that, okay, fine.
So your letter, do you want it to say fifty thousand? Do you want it to say forty-five to fifty, based on negotiations or experience?
These are all pretty senior people.
So you wanna just...
I personally would feel much better giving them a figure that is actually what we're planning on giving. There's none of them there who are amateurs at this, and many of them have all sorts of certifications, both federal and state, and in one case...
Broad.
International. Any other questions?
As long as we don't have any oil fires in Acton, we'll be offset, right?
We'll be fine, we'll be fine, or any sort of, of a war between Iran and Acton.
Thanks a lot.
Yes, sir.
I think it'd be a good idea to add those things to the, to the secondary letter going out, so...
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Because like you says, that'll, that will...
Wean it out a little bit.
It may wean it out, it may not, you know, but it at least gives everyone the option of saying, well, geez...
These are things which we would've brought up at the interview.
Right.
Yeah.
But because they're so disparate in terms of where they're located, we thought it'd be nice to give them a heads up that this is what we plan to do as far as salary, as far as these other specifics.
I think that's a great idea.
Yep, and I think we'd also talked about sending a copy of the agility test out in the letter as well.
Yes.
Just to give them an idea of what they're gonna have to do.
As well as a waiver
Yes.
Of making sure that they signed a medical waiver that they're healthy enough to do the test.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Former chief Harold Smith is the one who put together the agility test. Took what Sanford uses and some bits and pieces and came up with a very good one.
It's a very good test. It does not include some of the things that Sanford does, but Sanford spends a great deal of money on equipment, just testing. This will allow us to do good testing here with the major pieces of the test, without any added equipment, and can be done with a minimum of personnel as far as monitors at each station, etc.
Okay. He ran it with a number of people, I think aged eighteen to fifty-two, and out of it, everyone did it under the, within the, what was it, seven minute or eight minute?
Four, they all did it within four...
All within four, all onto five minutes.
Four minutes and thirty seconds.
Yeah, with the exception of one. One just got patway through it and said, "I'm done," and that was actually a younger person.
Twenty-one years old.
Yeah, twenty-one-year-old, so...
And so we designed it that we would do it twice the median time. The median time was four minutes, thirty seconds, so I think the ten minute is...
I think it was eight or, I think it was eight minutes, seven or eight minutes.
Is going to be the time that they have to do the entire test.
Yep, so, good.
All right.
Twice the median. They can't do it from that period of time, I thought it would be unreasonable to go any longer than that.
Okay. We're gonna have to ask you though, when you're talking, to come up here, because it won't, it won't, it won't be on the videotape. People can't hear you back there, because there's no microphone back there. So whenever you wanna talk, if you'd come up here, I'd appreciate it. Oh, no problem. Fire rescue consolidation update?
I got a text from Jennifer Scotto saying that, pretty much at this point, she's confirmed that Medicare has everything they need for the town. We are simply waiting for the January twenty-sixth meeting to come and go. We've got the documents from the, the transfer documents, everything has been looked over by both parties. So we're in pretty good shape.
Oh, that's great.
I had a brief conversation with Chief Langley before he came here. He's not here due to another, another commitment. One thing I asked him, and I wanna check with the board here to see what you think, once that date comes and goes, I mean, we still get some paperwork to shuffle back and forth and get things locked in. Should we just set like a February first date as being the takeover date? Or are we not ready to set an actual takeover date yet? I mean, to, if the meeting's, what, on the twenty-sixth? We don't wanna say on the twenty-seventh we're taking it over. We need some time, I think, to get things lined up and just to finalize that last bit of...
Well, I mean, I think it's gonna be a matter of just some paperwork. I mean, Tammy from, and I'm gonna speak from what I recall from Jennifer Scotto, but... I mean, the billing company, Tammy, has been saying for the longest time, because originally we put January first on it, that she could go back ninety days with either one, so, I mean, I don't know that you have to set a date, but you, but you're right, it's not gonna happen the next day. I mean, we still need to, we're gonna have to wait till the next selectmen's meeting to have you guys sign the transfer of ownership paperwork. We need to register the ambulance in the town's name, so there's going to be some things. I'm not even sure that we'll be able to do the, the February first, honestly, because if that meeting's on a Tuesday, it means you guys are gonna meet first, then they're gonna meet, so I wouldn't be able to prep anything for the following Tuesday, and that's, I'm guessing, February, so... I mean, we won't rush it, but we're gonna rush it, you know, but we'll make sure it's done right.
And you're talking mid-February for the new chief to be hired too, so that'll come along?
Well, it's hired, not, yeah, that's looking to be hired, but probably not in place yet, so... Because they may, whoever we hire might have to give a two-week notice, so...
And maybe we can coordinate, make it all March first, I mean, we'll figure it out as it gets a little closer.
All right, and that's all we've got left, then, is just wait for that meeting, and then I'll sign the paperwork, and then it's over.
Yep, I've had the, our attorney has looked over everything, and we're waiting for a couple of serial numbers, but that's the last-minute stuff we can do.
Been a long six years, huh, Bill?
Yeah, I guess so.
All right, abandoned properties?
Just an update for you, those two are just pending a court date, so that'll just be continued on there until I have more information.
Does Ken have to go to court?
I don't know at this point.
Okay. Special projects, roof bid for the fire station?
Yep, so you asked me to contact Hall Brothers?
Yeah.
And they did, and everybody saw the email that Michelle sent out regarding the capital improvements. Thirty-one thousand.
That's a big roof.
It's a big roof.
We didn't, we only spent twenty-five thousand for building here. How big did you make that fire station?
Room for expansion.
That's just for half, or is that the total, that's both sides?
No, that's just, only, only one side needs to be done, and I think he, he mentions on there that that's for the whole fire department building, the other building doesn't need to be done.
That's both, the whole roof, everything, both sides?
It's a, are they, were they done at the same time? Yes, and it's both sides. It's the, it's the other building that we figured was only done X amount of years ago, right?
Oh, you're talking about the ambulance building? Yeah, no, we're not, we're not even looking at that.
No, I mean, from what I recall, we asked them for the entire roof, if you read it.
Can we get away with half of it this year? You, you said the backside is, is the bad part, right?
The worst half is where we're having all the issues. The back half is where we're having all the issues. But, as you remember, I've been putting this in for a se...
I knew this was gonna come out, I've been putting it in for four years on a capital improvement to try to do a little bit at a time, and it kept getting kicked out, but in here we are again, so...
Yeah, Michelle sent us an email, there was no money saved for the roof. The only money that we asked the town for was a capital improvement to buy a new fire truck.
I understand, but I did put it in as a separate article for four years, and it got kicked out.
Yeah. You would initially ask just for half the roof to be done, though, right?
Correct, the backside, that's where we're having most issues.
And you're still good with that, so if this, it's only gonna be sixteen thousand then, right, or fifteen thousand five hundred?
Well, the back half is longer and more than the front.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it'd be completely divisible by two, but certainly if you only, if you want them...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm...
You want them re-quoted with just half of it?
I'm not in favor of doing half. Only because, back along, what, four years ago?
The front, a couple blew off the front.
We had some shingles blow off the front, and we patched it then. I mean, the whole roof is the same age.
How old?
Ninety-eight.
Eight, I think, yep.
Ninety-eight that building was put up?
Did you see the two things, and I'm not into roofing here, but the quoted price, thirty-one thousand, then underneath it it says to go over present roof with shingles, twenty-two thousand? Are any contractors, take a look at that and see what, maybe...
So with, instead of stripping it?
Yeah.
I mean, is that, I don't know if that's...
It's an awful lot of weight, though, right?
Yeah, that is, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't do that.
Especially since...
I wonder if we can dispose of those shingles cheaper than they can?
They still have to strip them, but yes, you probably can dispose of it cheaper, yeah.
That, we might be able to save a little bit there.
Yeah, we just put a container down there and have our hall solid.
Exactly.
What if, yeah, I mean, we go out to bid anyways, and, you know, when we go out to bid, maybe it'll come in a little lower.
Yeah.
And we can tell them that, you know...
I mean, they're still gonna have to do the back, you know, they do the back half, they still have to cap the top of it.
That's correct.
Which means that when they do the front half, in a couple of years, you gotta take the cap back off again, throw that away. Yeah. I don't know, I'm just maintaining buildings and whatnot, I've done a long time, and I just, I don't see, for the sake of it, doing half.
All right, well, let's go out to...
I know it's a lot of money, but...
Let's go out to bid, and...
You wanna go out to bid now?
Yeah, 'cause we need to figure for the, for the town meeting.
So, are we gonna put this as a warrant article, or at this point, we're not sure if we're gonna be putting, where we're gonna put it?
Well, we'll put it as a warrant article, but I don't, I wanna wait and see. We're gonna have a lot of money left over from the fire department this year because we didn't get started so early.
We'll have some salary monies left, yes.
Yeah, and that's gonna go into the undesignated fund, so we'll ask the town to take it back out of the undesignated fund and use it to pay for that, so it won't increase taxes. There should be at least thirty-one thousand, if not more. So won't the tax, it'll still come out of fire department money that the town's already approved, and you get your roof done, and won't be any increase in tax.
Works for me.
Okay. All right, so yeah, let's put it out to bid.
All right, I'm, somebody, well, I'll touch base with Dave, I mean, I need some specifics, but I'll give him a call.
Okay. Walkway, you got a bid on that too?
I, I mean, yes and no, so, I don't have a bid per se. I finally talked to Mr. Luterno, and, you know, he's not sure if you're going to, you know, are we gonna... You, last time you did a build-to-design, you know, you wanted him to give you, you wanted bids to come in based on the design. So are we doing that again as a, going out to bid to kind of custom the continuation design?
Yeah, we have to continue what's out there.
Right, but you intend on going out to bid for it?
Yeah, we have to, because it's gonna be over...
He wasn't sure if it was, you know...
Yeah.
If it was a continuation project, you know, but anyways...
Because he was low bidder.
I think he was the only bidder, but, I mean, I don't think it would hurt to go out to bid. Nevertheless, he's estimating about twenty thousand. He said twenty thousand was a safe number to put in the warrant, if you decide you wanna move that forward this year.
Okay.
And that, I mean, that's with, I guess there's gonna be some repair to the front of the library and stuff that he's kind of budgeted in, so... And I, and I will be honest, I think it's a few thousand dollars higher than, but we just kind of rounded it up to, you know, make sure we had enough for the...
Yeah, and Ken's gonna do the siding when they rip the other one out too, so we gotta re-side the front of that before he puts it in there, so... He'll have to, whoever gets it will have to work with Ken on that.
So the siding, so it's, the siding, he figured, what, forty thousand for the, to finish the town hall building?
Yeah. And was that with the fire escape too?
Yeah, I think that was everything.
Okay.
Wow, the stairs, you mean?
Yeah, the back stairs.
I don't know. Forty thousand, maybe we can get him to throw them in.
I think he, I think he was planning on that, because that was his thing, that they had to be, they were in rough shape and they have to be fixed.
So thirty-one for the roof, twenty thousand for the walkway. And is the whole board in favor of getting those three done, things done this year? I mean, essentially, like, like Ted said, I mean, the thirty-one thousand, hopefully we can just take out of undesignedated, and that will be a wash. The forty thousand, we've got exactly forty thousand in our capital improvement, so that will be a wash.
And we put forty thousand into the capital improvements each year, right?
I'd have to look. So it's just the walkway and any other pending projects that might come up next Tuesday?
So with the, with this year's, with what's in there in this year's, I know, when you have a number, when you have a number. So with this year's, with what's in the capital improvement fund now, if we can get the thirty-one thousand from the money that's going back from the fire department in, out of the undesignated fund, and we put forty thousand in this year, which is already part of the budget, so that's gonna leave us with twenty thousand dollars and all three of those jobs done.
So yeah, so around forty thousand is not bad.
No increase in tax. Okay, so then, if there is another project, we can go out and ask the town if they wanna do it. Okay?
Sure.
All right. Okay, Winter Sand and Salt Chad?
Last week you mentioned that you were gonna speak to Mr. Winchell. I did speak to Ken, so I thought I'd let you go, and you were gonna talk to him about...
Yeah, and I talked to him today, I forgot to ask him. All right, yeah, I'll give him a call as soon as we're done here.
He hasn't, there hasn't been much communication.
Okay, I'll give him a call as soon as I get out of here.
Thanks.
Foreclosing notices, hopefully they're down?
Seventeen.
Not going down very quick, are they? Blackhound Road?
Yeah, just threw it on there, just so you know that, I know the camera was kind of off, you instructed me to look into it with the attorney. We're gonna need another week and put it on the agenda for next week, because we're not, not done gathering information.
All right. And Mr. Cashin and Mr. Davis have something for us.
Evening, gentlemen. We're coming before you tonight just to comply with your request to let you know about intentions of...
Can we speak up a little? Tom, I can't hear.
We're, we're coming before you tonight to share with you our intentions for a warrant article.
Who's, who's coming before us?
Tom Cashin and Carl Davis.
Oh, okay.
And just before you get too far, they're not looking for a warrant article, they're looking for a secret ballot referendum.
Referendum ballot item.
They're not looking for a warrant article on the town warrants.
By petition?
They're looking, they're looking for a secret ballot.
By petition?
By petition or by...
Do you have, do you have a petition?
No, no, wait a minute, Tim. That, at a courtesy, they're here asking you to put it on first. You can, you can call an order for a referendum question.
I got you, okay, go ahead.
Right, so that's what he's doing.
The, so we're here to comply with your request to inform you about things that, before the end of the month, that might be on the warrant. And I don't know if Jennifer had shared some wording we brought up
Make copies.
For her to see on Friday. If, if you don't mind, I'll just read this. Read this short few sentences here, so that it's down for the record. The first page is entitled Three Rivers Land Trust Draft Petition to see if the town will vote to raise seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and to appropriate one hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of twenty-five plus or minus acres of land from Romack Orchards on the H Road in Acton. The difference to come from the Town Forest Reserve account in the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars previously raised from the sale of wood from Town Forest land on Hebo-Hible Road. Page two, just a statement of purpose. Three Rivers Land Trust, two thousand and sixteen petition purpose. The purpose of this petition is to provide twenty plus or minus additional acres to the Town Forest and permanent public access to the scenic view at the summit, which comprised of five plus or minus acres of Romack Orchard on the H Road. The whole twenty-five acres would be owned by the town, administered by the Town Forest Committee, with a conservation easement to be held by Three Rivers Land Trust in a similar arrangement to the Mary Grant Nature Reserve. Carl is doing, has done most of the legwork on this proposal, so I'll, I'll let him help with some questions.
How you doing, Carl?
Good, good, how you doing? I've got a map here, which I can... This is the H Road. Here's a transfer station. So the twenty-five acre parcel would come up along this northerly boundary around the field. This is stone wall here, this is stone wall, and then it would come right through.
Is that where all the buildings are too, on the H Road? All the old houses and stuff?
No, the buildings are right over here.
That's over there, okay.
The, the rest of the project, we're planning or hoping to get a couple of fires involved here. We're working with Main Farm Land Trust. We have two, three, four, six fires in this one. We have two that are definitely, who are interested in farming land. Main Farm Land Trust has recently got a donation for conservation just for York and Cumberland Town, it's a sizable donation. It's made this part of the project definitely more feasible. And, but we, you know, really felt strongly that the town and the village should be something that has public access to the town.
Are they gonna specifically do orchard again, or farm whatever they want?
They can farm what they want. There's seven acres left here that still could be brought back. Now, the Gordon, it was four years now since Gordon actively managed the seven acres.
Oh, is that that cleared-out area right next to the transfer station?
No, that was the yard, but then there's seven acres of trees right in here that are still viable, very viable, to bring back. And both farmers that are interested would bring back. Over here, the, the trees are definitely gone. There's a couple acres up here of those little lady apples, which could be brought back if somebody wanted to, or had a market for them. Other than that, it's, it's fielding. We had this cut last summer, and then there's a yard down here, I think that was either a year or two ago. We've been working with it now for a couple of years on the project. And eventually his patience will run out with us, but we're still trying.
So just to kind of, we, so we met with them on, Michelle and I met with them on Friday, just to kind of clarify, you know, petitions versus the, the selectmen, and we actually encouraged them to come before you, we thought that you should hear them for them first, and remember, you have the right to, to create an order, putting it on the ballot. If you choose not to, then they know their, how they go about it for a petition. But they are looking for the section twenty-five, twenty-eight secret ballot, which essentially, you don't have to make a decision tonight, is forty-five days. The deadline would be forty-five days, so sixty days prior, so there's some time before the town meeting, so if you wanna table it for a meeting or two, make a decision, they're still gonna have plenty of time to get their petition in for the June meeting.
How many, how many names do they need on the petition?
They need ten percent of the last gubernatorial election.
It's a hundred and twenty-something?
I think it's a hundred and ten, a hundred and...
It's 120-something, I think, 110, 115, yep. I think that's what we did last, last time?
Yep.
Which I, they, I feel they most likely will get at least that, if not more.
And I should add one more point to this, the, the top of the hill is going to cost us more than $100,000, so Three Rivers would be fundraising and grant-writing to cover the balance, which is going to be somewhere between another $50,000 and $100,000.
Be what?
Between another $50,000 and $100,000.
So, what happens if you don't get the rest of the money?
Town doesn't spend any money.
Yeah, but we've already taxed everybody for it.
What's that?
We've already taxed everybody for it, so we've got $100,000 sitting in the bank that, taxpayer money that we took from them in tax bills, and we couldn't do anything with it.
I don't know, is there a way to work that out? I don't know, I'm not...
I would think it'd be better to ask the town, then you wouldn't have to go to petition, ask the town if they're interested in pursuing negotiations to purchase this land, and then if they are, then the town can start negotiating, and then we can do a special town meeting to get the money when you have your money, and we don't have to tax anybody for it until it's time that we know we have all the money. Tax bills wouldn't have to increase, did we get a figure on what the tax bill would increase?
Not at this point, because we don't know what you're going to put on the warrant, but the, I mean, either way, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but if the money wasn't spent, it would still be collecting interest in the undesignated fund balance, I mean, it, you could put it...
Yeah, but why tax somebody, tell them we're going to buy land, and then we can't get the rest of the money to buy it?
You could put a contingent on, and, you know, but it should involve...
But you've already taxed them for it. You, we've increased the tax rate to have the money in the bank.
But you don't set the taxes until the next October. You know what I mean, you're not going to set the tax rate and know how much you have to move over from the undesigned...
Set the tax rate, yeah, we set the tax rate, what?